We're just chatting while you guys are doing business.
You ready?
Yeah, we're ready. Talking about you.
Good evening. I'd like to open the joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Board of Suvak Ben. Tonight, we will be interviewing candidates for the open seat on the Planning Board. My name is Hazel Nurse. I'm the chairman of the Planning Board. My far left is Christina Kelleher, John Bezony, John Gelsich. And so we'll open the meeting on behalf of the Planning Board. Ian?
Yes, Ian Johnson, Chair of the Westboro Select Board. I will open the meeting on behalf of the Select Board. Note that we only have four. Mark Silberberg, our newest member, is attending SUNS College graduation and unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but the rest of the board, Patrick Welch, Sean Keough, and Shelby Marshall, are here tonight. So we are open as a Select Board.
The first thing I'd like to do is just let people know the procedure of how we will go ahead with the meeting, the joint meeting. Each of the candidates will be taken in alphabetical order by their last name, and we'll ask them the same set of questions. The chairs will ask the questions and we'll alternate. Each candidate's interview will last approximately 10 to 12 minutes, and then it can start by making an open statement, and if they'd like, they can make a statement at the end also. We will allow questions from the boards for clarification only, but not new questions other than what we're asking tonight. So I think we'll start with question number, start with Ms. Arnold first, and I would ask, if at all possible, Mr. Lundgren and Ms. Regan could wait in the hall while we question each of the candidates.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hopefully, your mic will work. Let's see.
We had one that...
Oh, I'm sorry. Just I'd like to announce that Stephen Lush, who was sent an application originally, has withdrawn his application. So we have three applicants.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Welcome.
It works.
The first question tonight will be, would you please provide an opening statement about your background and why you're interested in being on the Planning Board, and any other information you think could be relative for us to make a decision?
My name's Elizabeth Arnold. I'm pursuing this opportunity to become more rooted in this community using my skillset to help shape its growth through a fair and compliant administrative process. I believe I'm a strong candidate, given my experience as a lawyer and compliance leader in state government administration, and also my interest in supporting the growth and development of Westboro. I work as the Deputy Chief Compliance Officer for the State's Executive Office of Health and Human Services, where I oversee a comprehensive compliance program for 12 state agencies. I've lived in Westboro for about two years with my husband, children, and more recently, my elderly parents have moved in with us. We moved here from Weymouth, Mass., and specifically, we chose Westboro because of its reputable school system and closer proximity to natural open spaces. Just looking forward to this opportunity and answering whatever questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Could you, Will, could you share with us what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Board?
Sure. I understand that the Planning Board evaluates and approves site plans in accordance with town codes and bylaws and other authority that may be applicable for a particular application. Ultimately, I understand that the Board influences how the town grows and develops, which impacts every corner of the community, and that's why I think this is a special opportunity. I've watched few meetings, recent meetings, online. I was particularly interested in some of the special permit applications. I thought the discussions were very interesting, a lot of interesting perspectives and viewpoints were expressed. I found it, the process that the Board underwent to consider all aspects of application to be interesting and right up my alley. I also just appreciated the public participation. I think it's important to understand all the different perspectives when making a big decision.
Thank you. The Planning Board members can only take an action or make decisions as a body and has no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that will contribute to the effectiveness of the Planning Board?
Sure. So I have extensive experience researching and interpreting rules and regulations in my day-to-day job. I evaluate risks and benefits of decisions that are highly visible and impactful. I'm an attentive listener, a strong communicator. I interact regularly with state government department heads, government leadership. I collaborate on a daily basis with folks to get work done. We're often negotiating priorities, deadlines, change within Health and Human Services. I think it's also a positive trait that I've lived in many different places. So I've lived in Colorado, Texas. I worked for a brief period overseas, and I think I bring some fresh perspectives from living in different communities.
What is your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use? And this could be as an approval authority, or as an applicant, or relate to applicants. So if you could just talk a little bit about that experience.
So I don't have direct experience with this. However, I do believe that my background and experience in public administration roles that have centered around compliance, policymaking, finance, data analytics, would enable me to jump in and learn quickly. I consider myself very adept at connecting dots, absorbing information. I think I'd be able to hit the ground running, even though I don't have direct experience.
Great.
Does any member of the Board have a clarification on my side, have a clarification on any answers that Elizabeth might have made?
None for me.
No, I don't have a clarification, but since this is the first candidate, can we come up with an additional question that we could ask all the candidates? Or are we not doing that? There are wrenches in this.
Do you have one in mind, John?
I do.
I mean, if we ask, if you ask it to all the candidates, I think...
That's fine, yeah. I mean, if you have one question you wanted to ask to all the candidates...
I was just looking to get a little bit more Planning Board specific and say, what couple, three, or one, or however many issues do you think are the most pressing before the Planning Board currently? Generally, not necessarily project-specific, but...
Yeah, I think affordable housing is an issue. I understand there's consideration of growth. I know Westboro's been changing in the past couple of years, just post-COVID. I know there's been a lot of growth and development, so I imagine that that's been interesting and challenging, just there might have been some unique issues presented before the Board. Those are my top-of-mind thoughts.
Thank you.
Great. Anything clarifying or questions? Great.
No, I don't think so. Thank you for a lot.
Thank you so much.
Is there anything further you'd like to say, tell us before we close our interview?
Or do we want to ask if they have any questions for us, or is that not appropriate?
I think that's...
Taking all the rules.
I think that's okay. No, I think asking questions of us is fine.
I...
You don't have to ask us.
I probably have a lot, and also, it could probably save them for... No, I just believe that I would be a very strong candidate, have a lot of perspectives. I've had a lot of life experiences, and I think I would offer fresh eyes and perspectives to the Planning Board, so I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you could ask Mr. Lundgren to come in.
Lundberg.
Lundberg to come in.
So, John, you'll ask that question? Okay. Thank you.
Tightened up.
That's perfect.
Well, just as long as it's the same.
Not rambling.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'd like to give a short opening statement, and then we have a few questions for you.
Sure. Some of you already know me, Justin Lundberg, 24 Adams Street. I moved to Westboro in 2007. I've owned businesses and real estate in the town, been a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for 15, 12 to 15 years, been a member of Conservation Commission for maybe 17 years at this point. I think that, you know, the Planning Board clearly plays an important role in the town in kind of shaping and regulating the, helping regulate the town's growth through the bylaws. And I think on the other boards that I'm at, I see a little bit of a different side of the regulation process. So the Planning Board's always been something that's been, it interested me, and I feel that I can, you know, help with my background in many different areas. So with that, you have my resume, so if you guys want to...
Thank you. You've told me about your background and why you're interested in being on the Planning Board, if you've just, if you've got a few more comments you should make on that.
Why, a few more comments on why I want to be on the...
Yeah.
On the Planning Board? Again, I think, so I went, I was a zoning board representative during the master plan process, and I think the, you know, the Planning Board is one of the bodies in town that can help effectuate the master plan. And I think that, again, it's, for many years, I've seen a different side where people come to the boards that I'm on, and it's more of an adjudication of an issue that they have, whereas the Planning Board is able to look at the development holistically and try to help the development fit within the zoning bylaws and for the betterment of the town. And, I mean, I think that's something that's different and appeals to me and is the primary reason that I'd like to have the opportunity to be on the Planning Board and see where it goes.
Great. Yeah, Justin, can you, you've done a little bit already, but share with us what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Board?
Okay. Site plan review, special permit review, custodian of the, you know, the bylaws largely, the zoning bylaws in town, A&R plans. I mean, it's, I think ultimately what it comes down to is that the Planning Board is the custodian of smart growth for the town, working with the town planner to make sure that the, you know, kind of the best opportunities are available for the town and that align with the master plan and the goals of the town.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Planning Board members can only take actions and make decisions as a body and has no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that will contribute to the effectiveness of the Planning Board?
I mean, as an attorney, being able to, you know, help decipher the laws and the complex nature of some of the things in front of you, as a business owner and site developer, being able to read plans, being able to work with other members of a body, which I've done on Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board, being able to help and give guidance. I think one of the, you know, one of the unique aspects of being on some different boards is that being on the Conservation Commission, we see one side of an issue where somebody's coming to develop a site that's near a sensitive area, and on the Zoning Board, we may be telling them to push towards that area to help the project conform with zoning. So I found it over the last, you know, dozen or so, or 15 or so years, very useful, being able to be on both boards, to be able to understand the push and pulls of the various factors. And I just think my experience on the other boards in town can help from the planning of projects, and not to say that, you know, that's not already done, it's just something I might be able to add a little bit of perspective on.
Again, something you've touched on, but could you talk about your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use? And this could be on an approval authority, or as an applicant in any form, so...
Well, some of you may know, so we, I was an early representative of a startup cannabis company, and so we had to go to all different towns in Massachusetts to try to develop our sites. And you can imagine that that was a very difficult process. You ran into a lot of opposition in some towns, some support in some towns, and so I think that from a site development point of view, I've experienced dozens and dozens of different zoning boards and planning boards, and, you know, I've worked, I think, effectively with our Planning Board and some of the zoning bylaw reviews and changes that we've made over the last 15 years or so to our bylaws. So I think, you know, and from a permitting point of view, I've permitted my own projects, I've permitted projects for other people, and I oversee, you know, the permits that come into the Zoning Board on that side, too.
Great, thank you.
John?
What issues, either one, two, or three, do you believe to be the most pressing issues before, currently before the Planning Board? Not necessarily project-specific, but just general issues?
Aside from litigation.
Yeah, that could be one.
So, I mean, I think that if you look at the master plan, I mean, there's what, three pages, four pages of goals, which are listed as important goals, but, you know, development of the downtown area, which we're looking at, some zoning changes for, traffic would probably be the two that always come up when you talk to people, you know, traffic and redevelopment of the downtown, preservation of open space, making sure that we're using whatever open space we have wisely in just planning the, prudently, the development in town, taking those factors into consideration, I guess, would be the, kind of the top of the long list.
Are there any questions, clarification from my Board?
Anything from the Select Board, clarification, questions?
So I just, I do have a, I think, just more of a question to our chairs, just because Mr. Lundgren has shared that, Lundgren, sorry, Justin. There is no conflict serving on Planning Board and being a member of Conservation as well as the ZBA, is that... well as the ZBA, is that correct? Just so I understand as a voting member here, in terms of holding three seats potentially?
I would think that's a question for the town manager.
Okay. So that's a question I just would like some clarification on.
Well, I think the other thing is it is something we need to think about. I mean, as far as that goes, whether it is legally able to do that or whether it's just as a matter of policy in this town, that is how we feel about somebody sitting on two or three different boards. So whether there may be some conflicts that come up, and it may be inappropriate, but I think that's something that we, as the boards, could make a decision or think about as far as when we discuss the candidates.
Sure. And I would like to hear from our town manager. So for anyone that couldn't hear me because I wasn't speaking into the microphone, it was just Mr. Lundberg has shared his extensive experience on Conservation and with ZBA and value that service. Just want to understand in this role going forward, if that presents potential conflict in any way. And also, I see Kristi ready to kind of speak to the mic. Based on her answer, I may want to hear from Justin, just on his thoughts on that.
So we did run this by town council, and town council does not find that there's a conflict. Just for additional information, you can't hold two elected offices, but multiple appointed offices does not raise a conflict.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Just a clarification question. Sorry, Kristi, for that. So because this is an appointment, not, so this would also be considered an appointed?
No, it's an elected board.
Right, but the other positions are appointed.
That's just my question, but this one is considered still elected?
Yes.
It wasn't specifically stated, but it would be the only elected position that Mr. Lundberg would be holding.
Perfect.
But, but just a clarification on that, I guess. He's being appointed, if he was chosen tonight, he'd be appointed tonight, not elected. So after this one-year period, if Mr. Lundberg decided to run again, then he would be elected, and he'd have to make a choice if I'm not in here?
No, no. The other, we've had select board members, as an example, who have served on appointed boards at the same time. We actually currently do, and that's permitted.
Okay.
It's the two elected.
Because the two are, one, you can be on one, but not two. Gotcha. Thank you.
Is there anything further you'd like to let us know, Mr. Lundberg?
Closing remarks, whatever.
Well, I think, did you have a question in regard to that?
I guess I would just like to get your perspective on, really, it's two-part. One, if you were to serve in a capacity, and I know we're only talking about a short period of time for this particular seat, but if you were to continue, do you, would you see yourself holding multiple seats if that was an opportunity? Obviously, there's an election to consider. And then, secondly, you know, do you envision a time that that would create any sort of conflict on any of those other two boards or this one?
Yeah, so, I mean, I would take a wait-and-see approach, first of all. Second of all, I think that the two boards that I'm on, people aren't beating down the door for those positions. We're going to have two openings on the Conservation Commission coming up, and they typically don't fill right away. And the same thing with the zoning board. When we have open positions, they tend to hang out for quite some time. So I think that I would base, you know, if I did continue on, went through an election, was elected, I'd have to take, that would be some, a couple of the factors to look at from a conflict point of view. The boards don't really govern each other. We, you know, there's pretty good separation. I've never had a conflict with Concom and zoning. There's nothing, you know, if I make a statement at one meeting, it can be consistent or inconsistent, depending on the, what we're basing our decision on at the, at the other hearing level. I don't, I would say that I see more conflicts with, when developers serve on boards, and they have attorneys that they've worked with before and they have to recuse. I don't think in 15 years I've had to recuse maybe from an abutting property. So I don't, I don't think conflicts is an issue between the boards, but I, you know, would certainly take advice and guidance. And the select board is the ultimate appointing authority, right, for those? So it's not like I can continue to be in perpetuity on either Concom or the ZBA. It could be something where if, if, when the position's advertised, if I'm up for appointment in that position and there's somebody else who's qualified, the select board can certainly choose to appoint somebody else.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification, also sharing, kind of your shared experience with, current experience with the Concom and ZBA. Thank you.
Sure. No, I think that, I think that the questions and the back and forth have been sufficient. Good luck with your decision, and thank you.
Thank you. And could you ask Ms. Reagan to come in?
Will do.
Good evening. If you'd like to give a short opening statement and tell us a little about yourself and why you want to be a planning board member?
Sure, sure. My name is Caroline. I'm a Westboro resident for the last six-plus years. I have really enjoyed watching the town sort of grow and everything since then. I very invested in the future of the town, as I have two small children in the school district here, one going into kindergarten, one who's in first grade right now. I also have, I don't know, public service has sort of been like a family tradition. My dad was a long-term selectman. My sister serves on the school board in her town, as well as the master planning committee. My uncle has been town moderator for 50 years in his town as well. So I think that, you know, having an opportunity to be on the planning board would be a great way to sort of get involved locally and just support the town however I can.
Thank you.
Yep. Can you share with us what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the planning board?
Sure. Really, the planning board, from my knowledge, touches sort of a lot of various aspects. They, I mean, overseeing land use decisions where it comes to development or zoning, housing, and making sure that the town's master plan is implemented to satisfy the residents and in order to foster growth within the town.
Great. Thank you.
Planning board members can only take action or make decisions as a body and has no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that will contribute to the effectiveness of the planning board?
Sure. I am an attorney by trade. I work in-house, so working collaboratively in a team is what I do all day, every day. Also, very used to working cross-functionally with different departments, well-trained as a listener to make sure I understand all aspects of any issues at hand or what the big picture is in order to be able to solve the problems and come to the right decision. I feel like I am able to balance competing interests with various departments and make sure that the end goal is to get to a yes, get to that solution that will hopefully satisfy all the parties.
Colin, what is your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use? And this could be as an approval authority or as an applicant or related to an applicant, whatever?
I, I really have no direct experience with that. I do have experience with, you know, interpreting regulations, statutes, contracts, as what I do in my day-to-day work. I'm a fast learner, so I'm hoping to, you know, learn those skills from others that have been doing this for a while.
Great.
John? What issues, either one, two, or three, do you believe to be the most pressing, pressing before the planning board currently? And it's not necessarily project-specific, but just general issues?
I feel that just town, development of open space, transportation issues around the town, as well as housing and sustainability, all of those just touch on the different aspects of what make this community special and how it can grow and become even better.
Thank you. Are there any question, clarifications?
Clarifying questions?
Are there anything else you'd like to tell us?
Or closing remarks?
Closing remarks? No, I would just, I, I appreciate being considered here. I know that I don't have any direct experience as being a part of any committee or organization in the town yet, but I blame my dad for fostering this, like, spirit in me. I know he would be proud that I even put my name in, so thank you for your consideration.
Well, thank you for applying. If you'd like to join the other applicants outside, and we're going to deliberate now.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, do you want to talk about the process?
I think Chris said she wanted to go first.
I think, I think what Hazel and I discussed as a process here is to go individually and just ask for folks' thoughts. I think instead of going with an immediate motion by somebody and having to act on that, just more to hear comments from each individually. Are you going to ask somebody to do it, or?
Can I ask a clarifying question? We're going to alternate, or are we going to go board by board?
I was just going to go board by board.
Are you asking for each candidate or just each of us individually?
Each, well, no, each of you individually, your feelings about the candidates.
The three candidates.
Yeah. And whether you have any strong feelings towards one or another and what your ideas were. And I think first, to see whether possibly we can get a consensus on the candidates, and then go from there.
Yeah, I think the end of it, we'll still ask for a motion, but instead of starting with that, let's, we thought it would be good for folks to be able to
Makes sense.
Make comments prior to that.
All right. Do you want to start, Christina?
She doesn't want to.
I don't, no, I have to start. I think we have really, three really strong candidates. I think for us, we need to think about kind of where gaps might be and how we want to build those. We have three attorneys, which is, which is kind of interesting. But, but yeah, I think it's, I think that'll, a piece of it will come down to that. I don't have, I don't have a clear front. Ask me, Hazel.
Okay. John?
Yeah. I'm kind of torn between Justin and Caroline, to be honest. I think the planning board has a lot coming on its plate this year. So I think with having just a year of term for this position, I think having someone with experience like Justin could be beneficial, having, at the same time, I've worked with him on zoning review, so. But I also, you know, listening to Caroline, although there's no real experience, but there seems a lot of passion and, you know, experience through her family that I thought was good, too, so.
I thought, again, we had three really good candidates. So my perspective on this whole appointing of this position, and Hazel and I, and John and Chris also talked about it on the board, is we were looking for somebody who was not necessarily involved, right? And we're trying to get new people involved and get new blood in the system. And so I think it's great that we've got two people that are looking to get involved that haven't been involved before. Reading their letters, I thought they all seemed to be generally, I don't really know how to say it. They're all attorneys, right? So they're all, they're all qualified. They're all, you know, thinking from the same perspective. I would say I'm probably leaning more towards either Elizabeth or Caroline. My concern with Justin, I think he's very accomplished and could, you know, fill this role, but having one person with three votes on a potential one application, right? If an application goes before ZBA, Concom, and Planning Board, that's one person who has votes on all three boards. That's kind of concerning to me. It's, maybe it's not an issue, but I don't know. And bringing in the idea of, if we're trying to get new people in, I, you know, I appreciate him taking the time and being on three boards, it's incredible, but I also want to get other people involved and get different perspectives. I thought Elizabeth, you know, has the background for that type of analysis. And, you know, in her cover letter, she talked about open space preservation and talked about housing here. Caroline's response, same thing, you know, talking about housing, transportation. I got to give credit to Justin, too. He, you know, he knew the issues that were before the board, so he's, you know, well adept at what's going on in town. So it's a tough decision. I think we do have three good candidates, but just on the idea of we're trying to get some new people in, I would lean towards Elizabeth or Caroline.
To follow up on John's comment about getting new people involved in town, I think it's terribly important that we really look towards younger generation and get them involved in this community, because if we look at board members, I think we find that we do have a lot of aging board members, and that it, in order to continue to have the town grow and keep up with times and involve the younger people in town, to me, is one of the most important things. As far as the planning board goes, this is something you can learn. It doesn't mean that we need someone that knows zoning laws or deals with site plans or approvals. This is something that can be learned. And we, three candidates we have, obviously, two of them, though, they do not have planning experience because they haven't been on boards, obviously have a background that would enable them to learn anything I think that they would need in order to participate on this board. I found that I was leaning more towards Elizabeth because I know the kinds of work that she does, being involved with Medicare things myself. And I looked, I really thought that the way she presented herself through paper and her resume, I felt was very strong as far as I was concerned. I have major concerns about Justin and the fact that being on three different boards, I can't believe it, even though legally it's not a stumbling block for him to be on those boards. I think you have to look at this also as how this appears to the public. And I think that would bother me to have someone that is on the zoning board of appeals and on the planning board, which I think is inappropriate. So that, for that reason, for me, though he should be a strong candidate, I am, feel it's much more important at this point to get other people involved in this community on our boards.
Turn to our board. Is anybody that wants to go first, or I can call on folks?
I'm going to go?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. Okay, thank you. So appreciate that the planning board went first. It's helpful to hear, since this is your board, what you think you need and sort of the lens from which you're coming into this. My, I think what you do is technical, and sometimes I think it's more technical work than what we do, but then, as I was listening to the conversation, I have certainly an appreciation that no one sort of comes, or in my experience, people don't come onto the select board and like, they've done this thing before, right? They bring relative, relevant professional and personal experience, and then they apply that along with a passion to serve and a commitment to do so. I think without question, based on current service, Justin checks a lot of boxes for the board and why he would be appropriate, right? So he's, he understands it. He has a lot of experience. You could hear that come through as he talked about the town experience. And, and I appreciate that he made relevant the, or shared that there hasn't been any conflict to date with Concom and the ZBA, at least to, you know, kind of his recollection. At the same time, I share those concerns, even if it's not an actual conflict, I just, is it the right thing to do, right? Now, Liz and Caroline sort of, to me, sort of are, they kind of presented, if you will, equally. Liz might get a little bit more of a nudge in kind of her, the way she conveyed kind of her public policy and development experience. And I was very interested to hear, she wrote this in her letter, she mentioned this to us tonight, living in a multi-generational household with disabilities, kind of, again, creates a lens to how do we develop and... creates a lens to how do we develop and use land and create accessibility." I liked that she shared her overseas experience and kind of highlighted having fresh eyes on, as she would approach things. So for that reason, I think Caroline, again, has very similar experience professionally in that their attorneys, you know, clearly has experience in collaboration, problem-solving, analysis, is eager to get involved, that was very clear. I think for me, sort of, if I had to give kind of a nudge, it would probably be Liz, based on what I heard tonight. And again, I do want to be clear, I appreciate Justin's experience, but I'm just worried about, could he do it? Is it okay, probably in the eyes of the law, but is it the best thing for development going forward? I'm just, I'm just not sure that I'm comfortable with that yet.
Sean?
Yeah, I agree with everybody. Three strong candidates. I think whoever doesn't get this role, I'd love to see them run for this office in the future. It's, it's interesting when we have one of these roles to appoint, and we get multiple candidates for these opportunities, yet when there's an election, it's almost always unopposed. So it would be nice to see multiple candidates at the ballot box. I think all three of them were strong. In my mind, the biggest thing, there, there's something different about this year, to me, in front of the planning board, and that is the downtown project and making decisions on the Rotary. We typically don't have something of that magnitude happening, and it is, decisions are going to be made there that will have ramifications for decades into the future. The timeline on that project, it looks like, is to have decisions made within the next year. I look at the three candidates here today, and although all three lawyers, Mr. Lundberg has the most business experience, I think understands the town of Westboro the best, and having permitted in things like that, businesses around town, I think is probably the best voice to help make that decision this year, help the planning board, be a vote on that decision. So I have no problem with any of the three candidates, and I'll be happy whoever we choose tonight, but my vote would be for Mr. Lundberg. Or are we not saying our vote? I guess, yeah. Leaning strongly. Okay.
Yeah, there's not a lot I can add here, but I'll just try to give my perspective. All three fantastic candidates, it was wonderful to see them. I do think that there were some stronger candidates, stronger candidates. If I put all things aside in regards to Mr. Lundberg's roles on other committees, on paper, historically, et cetera, he has the most background and skill in regards to this community, and the knowledge of boards, the knowledge of the history, the knowledge of the challenges that the town has faced and will face in the future. So I, I'm kind of putting that out there right now, is that, if I were to look at it purely from that perspective, he was the best candidate. I found that Ms. Arnold was a very strong candidate as well. I thought that she had some really good, her responses were good, she understood some of those challenges. You know, John, your question to her, to each one of the candidates was appropriate, and I think that, that kind of weeded out a little bit more information for us, so that was good, and I thought her response to that was, it was a good response. We have a number of challenges, you know, the select board in particular is looking at the ATSC and BWALT with the planning board this year, and that's going to be a pretty significant challenge. I think that Justin has a perspective on that as well. But again, I don't think that these boards can go wrong in voting, and I do, I concur with other board members that I hope all three candidates run for the office when the opportunity rises next year.
Great. Going last, I don't know what else to say. I guess it's, I agree, and I think Shelby said it, you know, look to the planning board in terms of how you're looking to construct yourself, this is a member of your board, not the, the select board. But I do echo what others have said. I mean, on paper, by far, I think Mr. Lundberg's the, the most qualified in terms of hitting the ground running, of understanding kind of the bylaws, site plans, being able to look, analyze, and they said hit the ground running, which, for a short-term position, seems like a, a skill to have there. So I think that's kind of in my mind. I definitely understand, and I appreciate the question in terms of, of conflict and legally, and part of it's probably my ignorance of, I guess I'm less concerned with conservation and more, it seems weird of planning board and zoning board of appeals, because there seems to be some sort of conflict there, so that is sticking in my mind out there. I thought, again, I thought the other two were strong candidates, as well as everyone said. Again, I think Mr. Lundberg stands a step above, or a couple steps above, in terms of his experience. I would, I think, lean to Ms. Arnold over Ms. Regan, and I think it's, has been stated before, I think her experience on the public policy side, albeit kind of state government side, but understanding kind of rules, actions, conflicts, ethics. Again, all lawyers are going to understand that, but there are some unique things, as we know, when we go through statewide ethics training. So I think that's how my view of, of coming out of these three are. I think Ms. Arnold, Ms. Regan, both of them, to the point of someone new, none of them have experience. And I got out of tonight of really any involvement in committees in, in town today, I didn't hear that from them or see that, unless I missed it in their resumes, so. I'll stop, stop there.
I don't know, is there anybody else to say, but I would like to, to just answer some of the questions that the members of the board of select raised on some, on the candidates. When I came on this board, I didn't know a lot about zoning and various things. These are things that, we have, we have three sort of long-term members on the board, and Christina, who's fairly new, but at the same time, I don't think looking at the qualifications for Mr. Lundberg, for example, yes, he may have the knowledge, but is he a good fit on our board at this particular time? I know we have a lot of projects coming up that are important, but I do feel that this, that, you know, knowing the zoning rules, regulations, or the bylaws, or whatever, are not the prime thing that the planning board needs to be the basis of being a member of the planning board. Being a member of the planning board is really looking at the town as a whole, looking at the experience, listening to the community, and using that information to make decisions. There are certain rules and regulations that we have to follow, but we have to follow them. It doesn't make any difference whether you know what the zoning rules are, or what the site plan rules are, we have to follow those particular rules. So it's really looking at the community as a whole, and how you want this community to develop, using these rules is the important thing. So that a knowledge of a background of, you know, the rules themselves, I don't think puts you above everyone else, because I don't think that's the most important thing, that I, as a planning board member, am looking at to add someone to our planning board. I'm looking for someone who really is looking for the future of the community, is willing to learn, has some background, can analyze things. Those are the important things that I'm looking for, and can work with the rest of our board. I don't know that anybody else has the other comments.
Yeah, I kind of want to build off of that. So just listening to the select board comments, I'm going between the background being something for a planner position or a ZBA, right? Because ZBA, it's a very technical zoning discussion. Like, you need to decide, is it section six finding, is it variance, how to meet these criteria? A lot of the stuff we do on the board is site plan, which has standards, but you're also looking at how the site design actually works with the surrounding area. Doesn't need a ton of technical knowledge for that. You also have a very capable planner that gives us probably more than she should feedback on the actual technical aspect of all the stuff. But to, I forgot, I think, Sean, you were saying, we've got the downtown plan coming up, and that's really an outreach and a discussion with the public job, not necessarily a regulatory job, right? And so I think all of them could do a great job in that, and I don't think you need that background to be able to be successful in that. I don't think it would hurt, but I don't think it's necessary. And so when we, when you talk about the, the role of planning board members, it is technical to a certain extent, but less technical than I think people realize.
I would just say, we, we are also, this is a 10-month assignment, right? This is not a five-year assignment. So you're talking about learning, I mean, you're going, you know, how quickly are you going to get up to speed? I understand, I mean, in most cases, when you're elected, you don't come into the role really having a full understanding of what you're getting yourself into, right? So, but this isn't a five-year assignment where you have ramp-up time. This is a, this is a 10-month assignment. So I think it makes sense to have the individual who is the most up to speed for that short-term assignment.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the additional thoughts, Hazel and John. You know, I'm just going to go back to, I really am looking to your board to identify what you think you need. I think that that's really important. We don't have that luxury when it comes to elections. Elections are elections, right? And so we can campaign and support differently, but this is a unique situation. I think Sean makes some great points about the sense of urgency and the nature of the downtown project, but I do think very much so that that project will be, to John's point, outreach-centric, and it is interesting to think about how a new face on the board could bring not only their own new perspective, but attract maybe different groups within the town who previously maybe weren't engaged, and it could just be because, I'm just using a hypothetical, Caroline has a following, and she's like, hey, I'm doing this, and people need to be involved in this downtown planning process. That could draw more people from the community than maybe previously would have been, you know, participated. That certainly is an unknown, but as we're talking about it, that certainly is something that I'm thinking about. But again, I really think that this is, it's great that we have a vote, but I'm really looking to the four of you to, you know, inform and lead this, and I think we have three great candidates, I don't think we can go wrong with any of them, so we're in a very, very fortunate position.
Question, Hazel. I agree with that, and I wonder, this was not an actual question, but one question I would actually love to hear from the candidates is besides actual boards and committees, what is their actual involvement in the town, beyond like town meeting, right? Like, what are you doing, like, within the community to understand some of those components and perspectives to bring as we're looking at the downtown plan? Because I, I, I know two of these candidates personally, and so I have a sense of generally what they do, but I think that might be helpful to kind of understand. So it's things like, you know, I've been involved in the, I'm up to speed on, they all sound like low-hanging fruit, I guess, but maybe not, like, what's going on with the library, how, what have you done, what's your, you know, knowledge of what's happening with the community center, what do you think about the downtown? What are you kind of hearing and seeing as some of the needs? I guess I just wonder, if there's, if there's a simple question, so not whatever I'm babbling, but like, if there's a simple question where we can get to, tell us about your actual involvement in the town.
I think we've asked the questions. I'm reluctant to go back and ask further questions. I don't think, we can really do that. Yeah, the next time, as far as that goes. I think we've all, you know, kind of listened. I will make a motion.
Yeah.
Go forward. All right, then, I nominate, is it a nomination?
Move to a point.
Move to a point.
Sorry, can you just clarify the process of this?
Is anybody, anything further to say on this? I think, we need to either vote, or, we have not come to consensus, obviously.
Right.
So therefore, I think it's appropriate, if someone on one of these boards wants to put someone forward, and then we would vote, if they do not get a majority, then we have a second.
Yeah, we vote together, so it's a majority of eight.
Yes.
So each of us has one vote.
One vote.
We don't need two motions from, like, one from each board, just.
No, it's a joint.
Okay.
And I would just, I would just say that, to Shelby's point, and I'm just speaking individually, not for our board, but I do agree with Shelby. I mean, this, this is an appointment to your board. The rules are there that because it's a vacancy, the, the rules are written, that it's a joint appointment by the select board and the planning board, but you know best of what you're looking for and what you need, so I, if you ask me, which you haven't, but if you did, I would ask that the motion comes from you as a board versus from us, because I think that's the, the right way I would, I would look at it.
Okay.
But then your motion, then, would be to put forth one candidate, and we would agree or not with that.
That's correct, yeah. All right, well, I would like to nominate Elizabeth Arnold to fill the planning board vacancy.
What was the name, sorry, can I hear you, Hazel?
What?
Elizabeth Arnold.
Arnold, okay.
Arnold, I should speak into the mic.
I'll second.
All right.
Want to take the?
Take the vote first, I'm going to vote Christina.
Is it roll call, or is it? No, it doesn't have to be roll call.
Because we're all in person, so.
Oh, it does need to be.
I just have the town manager.
Does it have to be roll call?
No.
No.
I think we can take it as a, I think we can do it as a show of hands on both boards.
Why don't we start, Hazel, with, with you and work our way down?
Can I just ask, is there a discussion about the motion? That's typically the way we do, we do this, rather than just.
I guess my question is, so the reason to say no to that motion would be because you wouldn't want that person, versus saying, here's my first choice, but if so, if the motion is for a second choice, then it's kind of like, do I vote for this because I can agree, or do I want to stay?
Yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of the issue I had brought up. It's like, if we do, if we do a motion where somebody nominates somebody, it's going to be likely a landslide, because no one's going to want to oppose that motion, right? So if we do individual votes, you know, you can vote for whoever you want, and then whoever gets, if they get a majority, that person gets appointed. But I don't want to throw a wrench in the whole process if this is how we have done it in the past.
Ian, Ian, sorry. Motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
If five people raise their hands, this is over.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand. I think what, since we have three candidates, there might want to be debate between two of the candidates, for example. I don't know. I'm not going to speak for you.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
We can always revisit a candidate. So if you're not sure, and you'd want to see what people think of another candidate.
Then you would defeat the motion, and bring a new motion forward, but we do have a motion.
Right.
So I guess we're in discussion phase of that motion, so.
Defeat the motion until you have everybody discuss as far as you want to discuss.
Well, I guess, I mean, the piece, John, and you brought this up before, I haven't seen this in action, I think you mentioned it's in Opconton, where it's a, you go down and everyone, in essence, is voting, because they're saying what their choice is, their top choice, and.
But again, everyone does it differently, so I don't want to force, enforce something that people are not comfortable with.
I mean, I'm comfortable with either.
I think, I mean, my take is, we had the motion that it was seconded, I would go with the, the vote that's there, and, because either way, it's, if someone does, if someone else, they would make a motion, I would suggest that they, they don't vote for the first candidate. It's not saying that you don't like the candidate, but.
Right, that you have a candidate you prefer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, the motion, and we've had a second. We ready to vote? We ready to vote? All in favor?
Three.
Three.
So that motion was defeated.
Right, do you have to do the full vote, though, of opposed and abstained?
Yeah.
All opposed.
Opposed.
So it's three to five.
To get to the, yeah.
Three, five, and, yeah, okay. Okay, so that's defeated.
Is there?
Anyone else like to make a motion?
Yeah, is there a second motion?
I move Caroline Reagan be appointed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I would like to kind of hear for those who didn't support the first motion, but are, Christine, you, yeah, I'd like to hear your perspective.
That's why I was a little bit stuck on the motion piece. I think, I think both of them would be fabulous. I think I would have no issues. For me, I think partially it's because I just have a broader awareness of Caroline's involvement in town, Elizabeth also very well maybe, our kids are in activities together. But I think when we're trying to think about continuing to increase transparency, increase participation, those are just some of the pieces that I believe Caroline could help with. It doesn't mean that Elizabeth couldn't, but that, that was kind of a piece of my perspective there.
And just to add on, I like her experience in the private sector. I value that a lot, especially when a lot of us are taking it, our experience from the private sector, and bringing it into public, so I think that helps a lot, too.
Anything else?
So just, just for clarification purpose, so Caroline didn't share her involvement in the town, so I know this goes to the question that no one answered, so I want to be careful here. Her letter doesn't speak to that. She's got kids, I'm going to presume she's involved with the schools, because that's what, like, parents who can do.
Well, she did say she was, she had kids in the school district.
Yeah, kids, kids in the school, so I would imagine she's, she's involved and what have you. And obviously, she's, you know, she has the family legacy kind of participation in various roles in other communities. So specifically, are you aware that she's, is anyone aware that she's part of a board or committee that's town or school-related or anything? Okay.
I will say, too.
Thanks.
I actually think, coming, I mean, coming from a family of educators, I feel connected to that community, just because there are so many educators in my family. So I do think that there's a level of, I don't, I'm not going to pretend that I know how to teach, because I don't, but I do think that when you are also kind of brought up in an environment of a certain perspective, approach, that there's an element of that kind of understanding as well. I'm not saying that's the most important piece, but I do think that that's, that that's interesting.
All right, would someone like to put a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was the second I was waiting. Was there a second?
Chris gave the second already.
So John, oh, okay. I guess we're ready to vote, then?
Yep.
All in favor of Ms. Reagan?
So much for select board, file and planning board, huh? Wow. All four of us voted for one person.
Yeah, well, well, let's call the vote, I guess.
All those opposed. That's what you're saying, call the vote, right?
Yes.
All those opposed. Abstain?
I'm abstaining. You're abstaining, so we have four to three, and one abstention.
I think it's appropriate, quite frankly, John, I'm sorry, I'm going to call you out on that comment, okay? We're doing kind of a hands-raised vote here, and that's the nature of the awkward, like, we're bringing someone forward. I was not in favor, I feel like the first candidate that was brought forward is more qualified of the two, just the way things were presented, and I don't appreciate being called out as a board, albeit, albeit, I understand the nature of the exchange, and I just, I want what's best for you guys in the town, but I just think it wasn't appropriate.
No, I appreciate that, Shelby, but I guess the problem is, if we're getting told that the select board is looking to appoint somebody that the planning board agrees with, and all four members of the, I didn't say, I, okay.
I did.
I apologize. The select board didn't say that. But certain members of the select board said, we're looking for the planning board to appoint somebody that they want, and all four planning board members vote for somebody, and we can't get a majority, how, like, then, what's the point?
You have a majority.
There's a majority. Do you have, you have a, you have a member?
Yeah, yeah, four, three.
You have a member, four, three, one, so there is, so Caroline.
That's not a majority, that's not a majority of eight voting members.
There was just one abstention.
There's one abstention, so four, three.
That counts as a no and a majority.
So it's four to three, you need.
Then, then, then I would.
Pretty sure you need five when you have, when you have eight voting members.
Kristi, how does this, oh, sorry. Then, I guess I would say, so, thank you.
Question before we move forward.
Yeah.
I don't believe it's a majority, but I'm Googling.
So through the chairs, I would ask for, to call for a revote, then?
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. So we, do we need a new motion, or a revote?
Revote on that previous motion, or a revote?
On the previous motion.
Create a whole new motion.
Revote on the motion to appoint Caroline Reagan.
Right.
That's what I'm asking for.
Okay. You, you, is, get part of that? You guys are.
We're going to recall.
Was to call for a revote, I think we need to.
I'll just remove to appoint Caroline Reagan to the planning board.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Okay, opposed. So it's five to three, so there's a majority. Thank you.
Not trying to insult you at all, it's just, it's an observation of.
I didn't feel strong-armed, I understand. Sorry.
I move for an adjournment of the.
Wait, wait, don't we want to call the candidates back in?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Jenny, could you ask the candidates to come back in? Let's get so sticky, I don't, you know, we don't know how to. Sorry, I could do that. Get you a paper ballot. We don't know. Thank you, thank you all for being applicants here tonight, the planning board, we really appreciate it. And we have nominated Caroline Reagan to join us on the planning board. So we look forward to it, and if you get in touch with Jenny, and she'll tell you the procedure, and you'll need to be sworn in by the town clerk. Thank you so much, and I hope that the other members, Elizabeth in particular, that she will perhaps run for the planning board seat this coming March, and otherwise get involved in some of the committees in town. And Justin, thank you for your service.
Yeah, I just want to say, good luck to the select board as well, thank you, all three of you, all very strong candidates, and we appreciated that, and we appreciated being part of the process. So thank you, and congratulations to Caroline.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would move adjournment of the select board from the joint meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
And I will move to adjourn for the planning board for the select meeting.
Do we just keep it?
No, I think we have to go out of this meeting and then re.
Adjourn the joint meeting and then.
And then come into the new meeting.
So moved.
Oh, all in favor?
That's your vote.
Yeah, but you can't vote twice. Thank you very much. She tried voting for you guys, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Your adjournment.
That was nice. We always take extra ones.
Thank all of you, appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute adjournment before we begin the planning board meeting.
M E S, on eight.
Turnpike Road, which we've had a request for continuance on. Did we get a letter on that, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion to continue, oh?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun.
Right. That's okay, that's okay. Just, Jim, I'll be in two seconds, I'm almost done. All right. Could I have a motion to continue the site plan for, what is it, special hearing? For 220 Turnpike Road until our next meeting in June?
June 3rd.
June 3rd.
So moved.
Is there, all in favor? All right, that matters. Continued. The next one is an A and R for 93 Bowman Street. Mr. Tasch?
I had a plan up there, and I said, gee, I guess I should be coming up, but I wasn't paying attention.
That's okay. There is just fine.
So for those that don't know me, my name is Jim Tasch, and I live in town. I'm another attorney.
Right.
And I represent the Walker and Ellis family that are about to complete this transfer to the town. And as a part of what they're doing, they're gifting to a neighbor two small pieces of property, one to cover an encroachment where their driveway encroaches on the Walker property, right near the street, right near the barn, there's a, or near the barn and shed, if you can see, there's a, some kind of parallelogram, what do you call that? And that's very small, it's going to be conveyed to take care of the driveway. And then there's a piece in back of the neighbor's property, the Donovan property, that has been promised for a long time to be conveyed to them.
And that's just, that's a landlocked piece, isn't it, that little piece in the back?
Yes. They're both, actually, they're both landlocked. And the one at the, the one close to Bowman Street is also landlocked. So they're, they're certainly not buildable lots, and they're depicted on the plan solely to create a legal description to convey them to the abutter. The town has been aware of this for a long time. It was part of the original negotiations, I believe, although I wasn't involved at that time. So they've been, as far as the town is concerned, this is part and parcel of the entire arrangement. So we're, in effect, creating a plan that shows what ultimately will be conveyed to the town, which is that Lot 1 for 34 and 1/2 acres or so.
Okay. Can you just clarify which parcel is not being included? Oh, I see, oh, sorry, it's in the, the --
So the, if you can see the, right, that little thing up there, and the big plan is enlarged over here on the side to give dimensions and --
447 square foot parcel.
The one that's marked non-buildable.
Yeah, in the, in the blowout map.
Yeah.
So it will become part, that, where the shed is shown there and the driveway, that already is owned by the Donovans. It just turned out that the driveway in that small area encroached on what was still the Walker Ellis property.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Tasch?
The only thing I would like to ask is the board's consideration, and since the town is the one that's acquiring this, they provided the plan, if the board would consider waiving the filing fees on this plan.
I'd be open to that.
I'd be open to that. Okay, could I have a motion to accept the A and R and waive the filing fees?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. The mechanics of --
So I --
Jenny can sign it.
I can sign it.
Yeah, she can sign the A and R.
So we can have it ready for you tomorrow to pick up? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not related, well, related to this, but not for him. Point of border on that one, we need to get a new authorization for you then, since we have a new board member, right? To endorse on our behalf.
I'll have to look, with the regulations you just did, in the regulations, it gives me the authority to sign annually, and that was in January.
We gave her authority to sign A and R.
Permanent authority, okay.
For A and Rs, I think.
You have, you gave the broad authority, yeah. Are you retracting it?
No, no, I was just saying, I wanted to give you the authority to sign it, and I thought we had to give you, renew the authority, since we're going to have a new board member. But if we did it already in the regulations --
Yeah, you put it in the regulations in January, so that, every January, you'll have to re-up that.
I retract my question.
All right. Okay, the letter to the legislative representative, did you say the time had gone by on that?
Yes, they already took it up, and it was passed over, so, no funding.
Okay, now, we have, I think everyone got the minutes for the Master Plan Implementation Committee dissolution, and that they voted to dissolve the committee. I don't think, I certainly don't have any questions about this, because we talked about it here, it's seemed appropriate. I know that Jenny will keep us informed of what's going on, and anybody who wants on the committee who wishes to stop in the planning office and ask questions of Jenny, she's always available. So I guess we need a motion to --
I move that the Planning Board dissolve the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Second. All in favor?
Do you have a thought on that? Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah. If you would, Jenny, if you would just notify the Board of Select that we have disbanded this committee.
Yes. Again, in the spirit of, like, transparency and outreach, I wonder if, I know we had talked about when we were discussing the disbandment of that committee, having a cadence of essentially master plan updates to this board. I wonder if that's something we should continue and invite those members and members of the public.
You know what might be, actually, might be even the better ideas at the town meeting?
Sure.
Just have Jenny give an update on the master plan, just as far as how far you've gotten, the goals that were met, just a short presentation. So at both the October and the March meetings, it would let the town know that we are moving forward, and those things that we have accomplished. And that's probably a better way to reach more people and do it that way, if that would be all right.
Two thoughts, kind of related to that. I don't want to add more to our plate as a planning board, but I think it might make sense to have, like, a public forum-style meeting at some point every year, maybe twice a year, to get feedback from the board, and that would be a good time to do these kind of updates. And then, another thing that I may have brought up to the board, or if I just brought up to you, or just brought up to Jenny, I think it would be good, as we go through applications for development, or zoning, or whatever comes before the board, to tie it to the master plan, and identify the goals or the objectives that are in the master plan that directly relate to that application or effort.
If appropriate, yeah.
Yeah, because then --
You say that, yes, but you mean, or whatever the --
So, so, like, in a, so if we were to get a site plan approval, and --
Let's take for multifamily housing.
For multifamily housing, sure. Yeah, so if there's an application for multifamily housing coming before the board, and we decide to approve it, have a list of findings that go with that decision, that say, "This application or this proposal will support Goal 5 of the master plan." And then, when we do zoning before town meeting, also link that zoning to achieving some goal or objective that's identified in the master plan.
Right.
That way, we can, yeah, and that way, we can, you know, master plans tend to just sit on shelves and not get read. This way, it'll make it, it'll make it a little bit more involved.
I mean, a good example, actually, is Faruk's new project down in Dania Drive, which we approved for multifamily housing down there. I mean, that was a, and allowed that exchange of property in order to go ahead and do the multifamily housing down there. I mean, that's a perfect example of using the master plan, because we need the housing, and secondly, it seemed appropriate to have the town have the open space behind the courthouse there, and keep that open versus putting housing back there. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's a good measure of the kinds of things for goals for the master plan, I would say, in that aspect of it.
And just, I guess, one more argument for it is, if we're trying to be transparent and understand what the town wants, the master plan, while it might not have huge participation from the public, is the master plan of the town. So if we are supposed to be making decisions based on what the residents want, that is our guiding document.
Yeah, and also, I think, in some ways, it certainly helps town staff to know that we're keeping track of what's going on, and, you know, coordinating, as far as Jenny goes, as to what the master plan is, and that she can work with other departments in the town to follow goals and why things are being done the way they're done. So it gives a good basis to work on that, I think.
So are you saying to link every project to the master plan?
No, just where we can.
Oh, just, okay.
Yeah, like, if there's objectives or goals in the master plan, increase multifamily housing, we make a finding for that site plan for multifamily, saying, you know, this also helps achieve, helps the town achieve Goal 5 of what the master plan says.
Yeah, I mean, the one we have coming up, for example, on the little houses down on Smith Valley Parkway.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a perfect example of providing housing for the town, of small units, affordable housing, essentially, for small units, which is, it was a major thing in the master plan. So we've not, we're still working on, they're still open, aren't they? I don't know where he was on that.
No, that was approved by the planning board.
That was approved on that.
Yeah.
I guess it's design review, it's still open on, but I mean, there's another example of something that works the way it's supposed to.
Okay.
Okay, planning update, Jenny?
My only update is really just the downtown project. The first public meeting is on June 11th at 6:00 PM, in this room, the great hall, the Forbes, in the Forbes Municipal Building. So I did have some flyers over there, if anybody wants to grab a couple to hand out to neighbors and friends, please do so. We also have yard signs coming in. They should be here, I believe, Thursday, so if anybody wants one for their yard, then please come by. We'll let you know once they're in. It might be Friday before you can pick it up.
Excuse me?
A yard sign.
Yard signs.
Like, that you stick in the grass.
It did ask me if you could put one up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so we're going to put them different places throughout town. We received Select Board approval for the right-of-way, and then we also have the sandwich board signs to put in front of the different municipal buildings. We're placing an ad in the community advocate to run about two weeks before the meeting, and we've been canvassing the downtown, talking to different business owners about the plan, what's going on.
Kristen was going around town, wasn't she, yeah?
Yep, yeah, so we've, we've, we have a few of us going around and talking, and so it's been really interesting and really good feedback to do that.
Thank you for doing that, that's very good.
That's really hands-on.
At the meeting, yes. Yep. And Westboro TV will also be recording at least the presentation, but similar to the last meeting last year, there will be an interactive component, so that part, it will be difficult to record each individual conversation, but the presentation will be recorded.
I'm trying to think of other meetings.
Yeah, right, yeah, they, they've been pretty good. I will say that Jenny and her staff has worked really hard at getting the word out on this.
Have you reached out to the schools?
We've also reached out to the schools, yes, and so we're, we, it was, it was in your newsletter?
It was, yeah.
Oh, awesome, okay. Awesome, we asked that, and then we asked for permission to put a sign at the school property, so people can see it there.
I assume it'll be on the electronic bulletin board?
Yep, it'll be on the billboard on Route 9.
Does Fails use Parent Square?
Yes.
I would, so I get the newsletter, but how many parents run, use the newsletter?
Oh, no.
Right.
Well, I shouldn't say, but yes, this was in the actual body of the email, I didn't have to --
What I'm saying is, so they can do, like, individual announcements on Parent Square. Can we just have one for, like, before the meeting? Talk to them, talk to the principals?
I'm not sure what you mean, is there a different method with them?
Yes, I'll show you.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, at least for Fails, it was, there was information in a newsletter and a email. There are these separate notifications that we get to log into a site.
Oh.
And --
Announcements. I got an announcement from the teacher that a field trip was postponed, right?
Oh.
But you can do those individual type of announcements.
Those also come with, like, a text message.
Okay. Yeah, I can ask, I can ask about that.
Just keeps it, like, more forefront, rather than buried in the newsletter.
They did do that for, I mean, we were voting on the budget, but they, they did do that for the town meeting, and there have been a couple of others where --
Great.
Okay, yeah, I can ask about that. And we put it on social media, too, as an event, so that's a little more accessible for people than just having a post, because it kind of pops up in people's feeds that this event's coming up. So if you can share that, if you're on Facebook, that would be great.
Another thought, jury, was it the B-Walt meeting, we had a couple of, there were a couple of high schoolers here?
Yeah, we also, well, if, if they put their name and email address on those sign-in sheets, we, we keep a running list of people, and so we put an email blast out to everyone.
I guess I was just thinking, like, is there a way that the high school civics teacher wants to support?
Good idea.
Yeah, I mean, it goes, go out to the school, I can, I don't know how they distribute it. I think one of the civics teachers is on our list, just because they did a project where they interviewed the planning department, so I don't know if he distributed it.
And do we reach out to Council on Aging?
Yes, yeah. It's gone to all the boards, committees, seniors, it's at the senior center, there's copies there, and at the, well, not at the library now, because it's, there's no one in there, but across the street.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully that means we'll --
Get a big turnout.
Hundreds.
Right. Any meetings of town committees? I know the DRB, I mean, the Design Review Board met this morning, I was not there, but Jenny, I don't know, was, they had one sign, maybe?
They had two signs, they approved the sign for, I think it's called Thela, it's an Indian street food restaurant, is what they call it, at 72 East Main. And then at 50 East Main, there's a Mexican restaurant, it's called Rancho Allegre. I'm probably mispronouncing that, but they had their sign approved, too, with conditions. And that's going in where Saporos was, yeah.
And, how do you pronounce the first one, Thela?
Thela, I believe, it's called Thela, Indian Street Food.
Yeah, that was right next to that, right? Right next to our Toros.
Next to --
Yes, in that little building.
That's where the Japanese restaurant used to be.
The bakery there, Swan --
Next to the --
Swansea's, yeah.
There's a bunch of restaurants, it's right next to where Swansky's Bakery was.
Right, next to Swansky's.
And there's a barber shop going in on the other side, but we're waiting for them to submit their application.
Oh, okay.
Any news on the old Reliant building?
No. Okay, we have some minutes, John?
Minutes from April 1st and April 15th. Oh, these were the ones that we talked about last meeting that had some changes. So same ones, any additional edits?
No.
Have the May 6 ones?
And May, May 6th.
Those aren't on here.
Wait on those.
You want to wait on those?
Yeah, they're not on the agenda.
Okay, we'll wait on May 6th. These need to be signed, John, I think.
You got to approve them first.
There it is, okay.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2025?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes of April 15th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? Hold off on May 6th.
Okay. Upcoming meeting dates, August 3rd, I mean, June 3rd and June 17th. Also, would you think about the fact, we usually, if at all possible, try to just have one meeting in July and one in August. So, and I think we can do that. I talked to Jenny, and there doesn't look like anything coming up that would make us having to meet twice, but would everybody please look at their vacation schedules, and see what possibilities might be for both those months, and we can then lock them in in June. So, let's see, is the Board of Select still meeting on the 2nd and 4th?
I believe so. They, I thought that they were going down to maybe one meeting in August, but I'll have to double-check that, I'm not positive.
So we might want to look at the 3rd Tuesday, in July and in August. So check your vacation plans, and we can make a decision next month.
That's the ultimate.
Okay?
So we can talk about it next week.
All right, if there's nothing else, I don't have anything else. Does any other member of the Board have anything?
Welcome, Caroline.
All right, well, welcome, Caroline, thank you for staying. We look forward to seeing you in June. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Westboro TV.
Is there, what's this executive session?
Yeah, we deleted that.
That's been moved, it was taken off the agenda, that --